To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th meeting. We need total tax refunds. Then totally correctly, we voted on $195.97. And the actual amount is $195.97. So we need to vote on making that for correction for the minutes. Is that our motion to approve the minutes? And then another discussion.
Yeah, we would have to make a brand new vote to vote on what we did. I will again restate that there's no detail in the minutes, especially the important discussion we had about the newspapers. Again, I suggest that we add at least something of a discussion from the board.
Alright, so let's, I guess the first thing we should do is let's vote to reapprove the, yeah, the tax refunds for April 9th of 2018 to $195.97. Any discussion? All in favor? And then approval of the minutes for April 9th of 2018. Motion to approve. All in favor? Aye. Alright, so now we have tax refunds for this meeting, April 3rd. Real estate taxes of $2,461.84. Or motor vehicle refund of $594.30, which is a total of $3,056 of course. So I have a motion to approve those refunds. Any other discussion? All in favor? And I will write my public comment if there is any. So is there any public comment? Yes?
Okay, another question actually is about tomorrow. Do you have a special meeting tomorrow?
We do.
Okay, is that on transfer station?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, my close people can't make a special meeting in the middle of the day. It's kind of tricky, especially on something like that. Are you looking to raise fees, lower fees, even same outcomes?
We're looking to have a discussion as a board. It'll be a lengthy discussion. And we need members that work for the town, that work on those days to be present. And again, some people do have, they work during the evening. So we need to have a lengthy discussion about that. Unfortunately, tonight, we have a meeting scheduled after this, so we couldn't have it tonight. So however wanted to, so we have a discussion tomorrow about that.
My comment on that would be I hope you don't vote as a board one way or the other to raise fees without having a public input in that. Because there's no public comment section on your agenda for tomorrow. So I just would hope that you wouldn't vote for it without having the public have a chance to weigh in on the fees. Especially it's a tax. So they should have a chance to comment on that. Okay, one other fee is more of a, rather more of a stated question. Going to have this as opposed to the whole ordinance in here. I had a special with the clerk of Middletown's county council. And there is no need for the whole ordinance.
Our charter requires it.
Okay, I think we should not stop wasting money. That shouldn't have been so much.
Maybe it was something chartering that you should have looked at. Unlike other towns.
It was more of a comment.
I also think it's public information for the town people to see for those that can't make a meeting, what's in for an ordinance. But I'm just simply following the charter.
Great, let's pick it.
Anyone else? Yes?
I ask you, why did our town assessor was fired?
It's public comment, you go, a comment to me?
So you're not going to say why?
No, I'm not going to discuss it.
It's not a private matter, she's no longer in the county.
I referred to the labor attorney and I'm happy to answer.
I mean, it's a public, a public office. The public didn't write to you why your assessor is not in office anymore, I think.
Anyone else?
Well, since it's still public comment and it's not on the agenda, I will ask over public comment why the assessor was fired, since you don't seem to want to share that information in the board of selectmen?
Melissa, I'm more than happy to share it in the board of selectmen. I'm just not sure what I can say or what I can't say. And now when I talk to the labor attorney for it, I don't find out what I can say or what I can't say.
It's very important that a employee like that, it's also in the charter that the board of finance chair has a selectmen who hired the assessor?
Board of finance chair is not in the charter to hire the assessor. The board of finance chair had nothing to do with hiring the current tax assessor. And under due cause, after consulting again with the labor attorney, which I'll say your labor attorney, I had the right under due cause to terminate that individual. And again, I will make a public statement about that. I absolutely am not going to hide. I'm just not sure what I can say or what I can't say.
Well, you can say why she was fired, that's public information.
Again, I will ask the labor attorney what I can say, what I can't. And I will make a statement at the next meeting.
And is there a reason why I do not believe it's in the charter for the whole entire ordinance to be published? When it's in the statutes, we don't have to. In fact, it would have even been cheaper to send a letter to every single resident in town explaining what was going on than it would be to put a whole.
So according to the charter, I believe it's section 3F. It talks about the call and it talks about the entire call. And again, it is what our charter states in this.
Call is different than ordinance.
The entire call is whatever the verdicts that we're voting on. Whether it's an ordinance, whether it's, whatever it is, that's the call. I checked that with the town clerk. I checked that with the town attorney.
Could I see that legal, I've asked for that and I never received a response? For the legal opinion from the town attorney?
Sure, I'll send it to you.
That would be great.
And also the town clerk verified it. And I was also given a copy of Dern's Charter that you quoted in their charter. It said that they just need to give information notice. It doesn't say the entire call in their charter. So again, we're just following our charter. If our charter stated differently, I would do what our charter says we need to do.
I have a question. Dave Puddin, could you tell us the name of the person who was fired?
Sure, Jennifer Coughlin.
Thank you. And secondly, if this is a thing with the charter, why can't we just right now start to get that fixed and get that out of the charter? Why don't we stall it?
We would have to, well, there's two things. We just did a charter revision. And that wasn't picked up as part of that. So we'd have to do another charter revision committee all over.
Can we do that? Whole charter committee?
A whole charter committee.
There's not an easier way to vote on this?
No, there's not, unfortunately. And we have been doing information, we've been posting ads and HAV News, which is much cheaper. The problem is that the timing of what needed to be done did not line up with that. So for example, it would be $300 to put it in HAV News and it might be $900 or $1,000 to put it in the Hartford Current. And the whole idea is to get the communication out to the town so they're aware of it. We do post it and we do put it on our website. I'm not disputing about.
I'm talking about the future, can we get it out of there?
I think it's something to put on a list to look to address. But as things come up, I think that's something for notes for future committees to look at.
Well, let's do it. I mean, we can't take it back out of the paper, the money we spent that's done. Let's get that out of the charter. So as Melissa said, you can just put the order in.
Charter was revised was 14 years ago. So it's something that has to be done every 10 years. So we just didn't.
Can't do it sooner, it costs too much money, or what's the problem?
We just went through the process. So again, I think we don't have that many town meetings. I don't think it's really, it's not like we're spending a million dollars doing it.
It doesn't happen all the time. It just happens if we happen to miss, I don't know.
Correct. It's more of the exception than the rule.
But I'm just saying, for the future, let's change it.
There's already, we've already been doing just the notice and there's already been legal opinions given on that. We do not have to publish the entire ordinance or the entire resolution in a paper. So I don't know why this attorney would come up.
I don't know either, but you never seem to agree with Melissa, the town attorney, so I'm going by his.
One time?
Yeah, it just happens. We get it in on paper, pay three to $400, it's a pedal, a lot cheaper, in my opinion.
How much did we pay for the full page on Middletown Press?
Three thirds, $12,000.
And how much was the HAV News?
I don't know, Bill, did it come in? Do you know?
It's more than once. So why didn't you publish it twice in HAV News like you did in Middletown Press? You published the hearing and the meeting.
That was a clerical error on Julian's part. We need to notice it all together, so that's our mistake.
So going forward, you will not put the hearing and the meeting?
No, it can all be in the same house. And it usually is, except for that one time, that was there. And people do make mistakes. So, anyone else? Okay, do you have to report budget for regional district 17? Because I put you on the agenda. You did? Yeah. Wow, thank you. We just finished budget season, as you know, and we're going forward with our budget referendum coming up in May. With a .38% increase for the budget this year. And the vote is May 8th, correct? Who's going to refer into this May? Alright, I have a few appointments to make. As you know, Christopher Mash is our new fire marshal. And he was deputy fire marshal. Scott Brooks, as I mentioned before, is not renewing his certification to be a deputy fire marshal. And so Kevin Griffith, who is here tonight, I'm going to have you just be in for a second. Kevin is a certified fire marshal. He's lived in town for five years. He actually works as a fire and life safety specialist for the state. And he represents the state fire marshal in his full-time capacity. He's also a new member of the HAV volunteer fire department. So Kevin has offered to be a deputy fire marshal. And I think it'll work out well, since we'll be losing Scott at the end of the year. We get him time to get out of here, get acquitted. And Scott is having surgery in a couple of days, so he's going to be on commission for a while. And Bill Robbins is also deputy fire marshal right now, but he's kind of looking to retire and work his way out of being active. So I think obviously Kevin would be a great addition to helping as a deputy fire marshal. So I'd like a motion if we can appoint Kevin to be one of our deputy fire marshals.
I'll make that motion.
And he's, all in favor?
Aye.
Another point that I'd like to make is for our EDC coordinator. As many of you know, we had a EDC coordinator that we advertised for, hired with East Haddon. Unfortunately, that individual did not work out. And both Kevin and East Haddon decided to let that individual go. I had asked at the time Munster to help me out temporarily, just because murder dates was coming up, we needed to get things done. There were updates that we needed to do on the website to try to get information there. So Robbins is going to help me out in that capacity. We did advertise a job when we applied with East Haddon. We did run our own ad separately to see if there were any other candidates that we had missed in the last go-round. Individuals applied for the position. We interviewed and the committee decided that Robbins would be the best choice to fill the position. It's going to be a little bit different, like to 10 hours a week. I have reports that she's done. She got things that she's been doing for the town. She knows the town, she knows building regulations. She sits on CBA, she cheers CBA, so she has a lot of things to offer. She's been updating her website, she's got the plan news, she's got everything we need to do. So those businesses that are looking to come to town know what we need to do to start to open a business here in Haddon. She's identified empty spaces of what we have. And we're working on events and things to do to try to communicate with the business owners to try to get more activity. Obviously, with what is going on, we have infrastructure with Tylerville and possibly infrastructure improvements in the center. We have a lot of businesses that are looking to come to town. And a lot of the questions, they don't really understand about the subject consumer, what all that means. And sometimes they're fearful of things that they don't know. So in addition to all of the things that she's done, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kevin to be the EDC coordinator.
They make that motion, I wish you would do a great job so far.
Any discussion?
Yes, could you explain where, it's a little confusing what you said about the past posting? Was this job posted again?
Yes.
Where was that posted? And when was that posted?
I have a job posting.
And who was on the hiring committee?
Stella, the chair of the EDC, with Lynn, who oversees EDC under her department, and myself. And it was posted, April? Created April 4th, and that raises our program for each of you.
And I would like to know what, I mean, we have zero information on the other candidates, the resumes, what Robbins experiences are with economic development. I understand that there isn't any experience with economic development. And I'd also like to ask why she's been paid as economic development coordinator illegally for the past month and a half?
Well, she wasn't paid illegally, it was temporary. And it was helping us out. And she knew we were a volunteer and she was paid for out-of-town meetings that she needed to attend. It's always the board of selectmen. I've never given the board well supply, what we did. We put a committee together, we go through the process. Same process we follow all the time. I didn't even think we had to apply her again, but to make air, we did. Applied for this to put out the auto-apply. And the committee went through the process and that's the reputation from the committee. So you can either vote for or you can vote against.
So explain why you were paying her as EDC coordinator?
Because she was working and doing, she was going to meetings for CCM. She met with Serp, she was working with the business owner. She took stuff to update the website.
How did she obtain this motion to do it?
I asked her to help me to do it.
So she was hired as EDC coordinator without the board's approval?
I temporarily, I was told that I could hire somebody to help me in that role until I made it official, yes.
Who gave you that advice?
The town attorney.
The town attorney's here?
No, he isn't.
Yeah, I saw him walking.
The labor attorney is not here.
Oh, the labor attorney. Okay, could you also send me that ruling from the labor attorney?
I don't have it, that was a verbal conversation.
Could you get one in writing?
No.
I'd like to hear from Robbins to hear what her experience is with economic development.
I think Robbins already been interviewed and answered the question. So it's a motion on the table to appoint the EDC coordinator. He's not done this to any other individual. Again, I'm tired of hearing that done this against certain individuals that work for the town. So we're going to go through.
Excuse me? What's your criteria to be a selectman?
For, I'm not doing that. So if there's a motion on the table to vote, you don't care.
Even though this is still a public comment period on that motion?
Not public comment. It is not public comment, that is over. Again, call of order. So all those in favor, we're putting Robbins to EDC coordinator.
Aye.
Anything? Process is same for everybody.
Section 9.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Rob, very much.
Nice job.
So correspondence, a letter from the Royal, regardless, from the Bryan Memorial Library, to Liz, writing to the board of trustees, would like to contribute $12,950 towards the purchase of the new boiler for the library. The boiler associated with installation cost of town across the library, $21,250. So the town's contribution was extremely beneficial, providing part of the necessary funding. We look forward to the anticipated 25% fuel oil savings and associated decrease in electric usage. This will increase capacity in other sectors and help in a more level, more level our operational needs. I think this is another successful joint venture between the town and the library. In addition, let me take this opportunity to really thank you for sending us a pre-urized cell phone signal booster, which provides greater safety and use for the patrons and around the library. Your responses, I'm very appreciative. Again, we extend our thanks, best regards. Royal, the president, board of trustees, and the library. Motion to adjourn for, all in favor?
Aye.
It's a public hearing portion to discuss the ordinance. I do have copies of the ordinance for those of you who didn't see it printed. And if people just want to look at that, it's time. What we're going to do at 7 o'clock is we're going to vote via town meetings on this ordinance. So basically, and I'm hoping many of you are here are going to be the beneficiaries of the clean water flowing here in Tylerville. So I thought this is also the opportunity to maybe answer some questions that you have. And we did have a hearing with the state and they explained quite a few things, but the reality is, we're ready. So we got the money, as many of you know. We have $7.3 million. This is the portion that we need to talk about how the ordinance takes effect. The property owners, how the hookup, and those more legalese things that we need to do for the town. And the town attorney is here and he'll speak to that in a minute. What we're going to have to do is the second portion of this is, I'm guessing, the end of May. We actually, we are charter. We can't spend any money that's not in our town budget, even if it's a grant. So we need to have a town meeting to approve the spending of this money. And we will do that shortly. I just, we've had so many town meetings and there's so many different projects and things going on. I just need to try to find the time to fit it in the calendar so that people can be here to come. So as important it is for you to be here to have a discussion about this, it'll be mostly important to come to that meeting to vote on the money. Because that's actually what's going to start to happen. So I'll just talk again a little bit briefly. Connecticut Water is the exclusive water provider for our area. They are regulated with PIRA. They set their rates and that type thing. We have met with an engineering team from Connecticut Water to talk about what we need to do. There are some easements that the town's going to need to get to be able to run the pipes and do what we need to do. We're looking for construction. I wish we could put a shovel on the ground this year, because as you all know, I'm, he's been my baby, I've been trying to get this done. That's probably what's happening, it'll happen until next construction season. The one thing I did find out that I was pleasantly surprised is they don't have to dig the whole thing and then turn the water on. They actually set people up as they go, which is super exciting. So we're very excited about that. So Rich, if you want to, Rich Corral is our town attorney from RJ Kelly &amp; Spelcy. If you just want to kind of give an outline of what the ordinance is meant to do and who it affects. And again, if you're in that area and your property is listed here, you are affected by this. And then I'll, you have to answer any other questions.
Yes, I do. There was a rumor going around, and I know that some people here were, there was a rumor going around that Little Nettow was not going to be included in this.
Little Nettow is definitely included. And so this is the thing I need to say. I can't imagine that there is anybody, I guess I can. I know two individuals that voted no against this that does not want to see this happen. It is a public safety issue. You all deserve clean water. Maybe your wells aren't affected now, some of you, and maybe they are. But this is something to take care of that. That this is going to help you, it's going to help your quality of life, it's going to help increase your property values. There's a lot of win-win around this, okay? So we're doing this the right way. We didn't take anybody out. The circle of how, what they were identified is how we got the funding to be able to do this, okay? So I don't know who, spreading rumors. Please pick up the phone and call my office immediately. Because I just, you know, I guess people just like to talk.
That's what I'm saying. I just didn't want everybody to get upset and then we'll start more, because that's what's happening.
Yeah, so we're almost there. And these are just, again, the last steps of what we need to do to make sure we're legal in the process of spending the money to start the construction, okay?
Okay. So good evening. Like Liz said, I'm Rich Corral, I'm your town attorney. And I'm just going to walk you through this groundwater ordinance. As Liz indicated, the, in order to get, HAV Catch 22, a little circular reasoning, in order to get the money from the state, we have to tell the state that as water supply comes through, the property owners with the contaminated wells must abandon those wells and must disconnect their use of the well and connect to the clean water system. So that's what this ordinance does. It requires property owners in the area that's affected by this contamination to abandon their wells and disconnect them from the house and to connect to the water supply line that's being brought in. So that's what this does. Just to, little, just to give a good background on where we are with the state and with Connecticut Water. This ordinance has been reviewed not only by myself and Liz Gooden in the town, but also by Connecticut Water, the State Department of Public Health, and the state DEEP. So it's had a lot of eyes on it. Just kind of walking you through it so you understand what it says. There's a lot of legalese here, so I'm going to try to consolidate it on a section by section basis. The first section is just the title, Groundwater Management Zone Ordinance. The second section, section two, is the purpose. And there's a lot of whereas's there. Essentially, that's the history of where we've gotten to today. How groundwater is contaminated, DEEP is requiring the discontinuation of the wells. The recommended alternative is a new water supply line from Connecticut Water coming up from Chester. And the abandonment of wells once those properties are connected. Section three is the legal scope under which the town can enact this ordinance. And the ordinance that no groundwater shall be extracted, consumed, or utilized from the ground in the area that's defined within the ordinance. It applies to all property. Section four applies to all property within that circle. Section five defines what we're talking about, groundwater. Section six describes the creation of that zone. And section seven is really where it becomes applicable to everybody who's affected by this. This is the section that says you will not extract or consume or use groundwater if you have a well in this area. That upon the, upon the bringing of the water in, you will permanently and physically separate your plumbing from the contaminated well. That the existing groundwater will be abandoned within 30 days after you've connected to the public's water supply. And that you must notify the town once they bring the water in, whether you're going to connect to the water or not. Because there is an option to not do it. And I'll go through that in a minute. And then finally, just because your property that's in this area doesn't mean that it prohibits you from developing the property in any way. The exceptions of why you might keep the well open is to evaluate groundwater for monitoring purposes. The state or federal or local government can install a well for monitoring environmental purposes. You can use a closed-loop geothermal system. You can go into the ground for that. There was one carve-out for the industrial well that's used for the marina down on Four Harper's Landing. They use it to wash boats and such. They use it to wash boats and such. Having said that, they will still connect to the water supply line because they have other public drinking supply there, and that will be connected to clean water. So, it's just the industrial use for the marina that's going to be accepted. And then, the last part of the exceptions is there's, there's the ability to say, "I don't want the water," right? "I want to use my well." Okay. If, in order to do that, you've got to hire an engineer to explain to the state and to the town and to the health district why your well is not contaminated. You have to prove that it's not. You have to monitor it for five years, twice a year, and report that to the town and to the state and to the health district. And if, at any point in time, it's determined that there is contamination in your well, or it's drawing the contamination towards your well across other properties, you will be required to abandon it. But at that point in time, it won't be paid for by the state, okay? You're going to have to pay for it. So, nobody has to connect, but if you don't, it's all, the dime's going to be on you and not the town. Right now, in order for us to get the funding, the $7.3 million covers not only bringing the water in, but connecting it to your home or your business and the cost of abandoning the well, okay? But if you don't want to do that now, you can opt out. There's a process in the ordinance to opt out, but if it's found later that there's contamination there or you're moving the pollutants somewhere else, the state's going to require you to disconnect and abandon your well, and it's going to be out of your cost. So, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Those that have to, who have to have this hookup, those properties already have a consent order, and so those property owners know who they are.
And there's about, there's about eight property owners that are under consent order with D P H right now that say that if the water's brought in, they must connect.
They don't have a choice.
They're out of choice.
Okay, so, and those property owners know who they are. So, if you don't have that in place, you have a choice to do this. So, again, everything will be taken care of. So, the well abandonment will be taken care of by this project, and the hookup of the water will be paid for by this project. In addition, we're planning to put in, we've identified with the fire chief and the state, or fire marshal, 12 hydrants that will be located in the proximity and the area. And Claire, to kind of answer your question, they're all part of this ordinance. So, here is the map, and it does go all the way down to the river. It goes all the way down. And all the properties are identified here, okay? So, nothing's changed as far as that goes. So, those water hydrants will help, again, too, for, you know, property casualty insurance, where your closest hydrant to help to put fires out and all those things. Connecticut Water is going to pay to install the hydrants, and then the town will pay a maintenance fee to maintain those lines every year. So, that has been determined already as part of the construction process. So, just so you guys are aware of what more than that's going in on this piece. Does anybody have any questions?
I mean, I'm just.
Yes.
Rich, earlier you were saying industrial part of the marina. If I wanted to do a water jet at my shop, could I do that, heat that well for that water jet machine, or? You could, you'd have, you'd have to, you'd have to opt out. You have to go through the process. You have to continue to monitor. Okay, but I couldn't use it for just, just that gene?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's what I learned from them, okay.
I have a similar question. What classifies something as an industrial well? It was, it's the volume that it?
Just the use. The use is not used for public consumption or bathing or cooking.
I'm just, I'm asking my annual service. I'm just curious.
Growing vegetable, green event. My understanding of the urinal's usage is basically washing down the bowls.
And there is not a contamination issue there, so it's not.
I was just curious, because we have the auto repair shop, and I, you know, washing up cars, washing up boats, they seem simple, but.
Well, what's involved? What's the process for abandoning a well?
Um, they hire a well, I'm learning so much about how this works. They hire a well driller who has to go in and they use?
That night.
That night.
Type of clay.
To, to stop the usage of that. The trickiest piece in this is going to be for some of you who have little funky properties, properties, you know, not everybody's well is like here, and then the line comes in here, because some of those buildings are so old and people running off of different places. So, it's going to be a little bit tricky to identify where those places are. So, that's one of the things that we're using, trying to establish right now. We're trying to get all that figured out now, so that when the time comes for the construction, we're not figuring out as we go. So, if you are aware that you have a property that might have a well, that's a certain situation, or the well is here, I have a situation where, on Ridge Road Street, that the road is here, goes to three other homes, you know, each doesn't have its own individual well. It's important to share that information with us if there's something quirky, just because it's how things were done back then. I don't think anybody really thought about the future, how that'll sort of play out, but we want to make sure that we don't have any contaminants breaking through or going anywhere.
Are you familiar with how the water would be run to a property like ours who does not have a basement?
No.
How's the water going to get to our?
I don't know, I don't know exactly, but I'm assuming it's going to connect somehow to the existing water line. Or, you know, your, your well comes into your house somehow.
Or property, yeah. I mean, Connecticut Water knows, that's, they're installing, and the town's going to have to go up there, need a higher contractor, because the money has to go through the town. So, we're going to have, we are going to be involved in every process of piece of how it's done, but I, I don't know. Anybody else?
You don't know if they're going to come right off the river, right through our parking lot? Can we pick, or tell them that we're going to grass, and they don't want to take the whole parking lot out?
I mean, there, if you have a concern about where the access is going to be, you should talk to Liz or Liz Gooden and, and tell them, because there was a process now of drawing those lines. Trying to figure out now where that's all going to go.
We need to repave the whole, right.
Right, well, I'm going to say this. They're going to, they're not going to dig up more than they need to, I can tell you that, because we only have so much money to get the project done, first of all. But, second of all, Jim Buck, he texted me, he's like, he's afraid that this whole parking lot's going to be dug up in the middle of wedding season, right? How that's going to affect things. And, and I, and that's a valid concern, and you guys have the same concern. So, that's fine. So, asking those questions ahead of time and knowing to prepare is important, but I, you know, and, and we're trying again to do as much due diligence as possible, but I can't imagine they's, I mean, they're going to make it probably the easiest way that they can do it without the least amount of disruption, but I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means the grass or the parking lot. I don't know. And, and they know that, which is another piece, because, you know, I, I mean, some of you are business owners, and you don't want there to be a lot of disruption, and there's concern about traffic and all those other things. And it really is nice to know they're going to do it as they go, so the whole thing isn't going to be exposed for a long period of time. And whether they're going to come down and save it first, and then do a bridge, and then go down to, I don't know. I just know that the water starts in Chester, and then they'll work their way. And I hate to say that's it, but that's as far as we're worried about. So, just email and let me know, or, as we showed Liz Gooden know, and we'll keep you in the hole. This is not meant to hide information. This is, but was actually kind of glad that we needed to do this tonight, because it just kind of reengages everybody. Some people have questions or they have concerns, and we can answer them, or we can answer support. Anybody else?
Would love that a little bit of a roll. Are we going to be able to winterize places now?
I don't see how you could. I don't know.
Winterize? I don't know. I mean, you're going to, you'll have the access to water.
You can just be able to shut off, just some of the houses, they have to drain the water during winter.
I mean, it's probably a little question of whether you get heat exhumation.
But little, I know, typically, out of the property, there's a, they run a pipe and there's a valve, and it's something that's underground.
The T M, that's right.
Got the water off, and then you can drain it.
Oh, I just want to make sure I'm doing it.
Yeah, they have to put in a plate or valve.
Who's brought up? The last meeting we're actively, if I was breaking up against anyone.
The engineers, I mean, they're, I'm not an engineer. I'm a math person, but they're, they're smart individuals, and they've done many water lines, so they do, you know, they do know what they're doing. So, yeah, okay.
We've got a property, and what they do is we, we contact them and they come out, they take the feeder out, which allows the system to drain out that way. So, every, we contact, we take it out, and then they put it back in.
Is there a question, too?
Yeah. Is there an, like, an engineer or somebody from Connecticut Water that's going to come out and assess our situation to see what we need to do?
Yeah, they're pulling everything. Yeah, so, it's going to be something complicated.
To, to decommission our well and, you know, because it's, it's all old stuff that people did over the years, and we've used it, and it sort of works, but.
What I told them is as we go, I, the letters will come from the town, so, you know, we're going to have to coordinate all that, which we're going to have to, Connecticut Water's doing the engineering, and we're going to have to have a contractor then actually do the work. So, it's kind of like we do a road project. We send letters out to those residents and say, "On such and such a time, we're going to be doing this, we're going to be doing this, we're going to be doing this." I mean, if it seems like it's not a straightforward process, I know they'll contact you probably a lot sooner than when the time is, but every property owner's going to know, you know, I will, I, I'm going to request in the RFP when we go out, that the construction company have a liaison to be able to work with the residents, because they're in the field. They're out there, we're doing the work. I'm not.
Yeah, because, because everybody's got, got different stuff that we've done over the years that was there when we bought the place 20 years ago.
Right, right.
I don't know if, you know, it's just, have, has it stuff, and they need to know what's there so they can work with it.
Yeah, I think basically.
To make it so it can be winterized, and it's all correct.
Yeah, they're going to know, you know, they're going to go in, they're going to identify at the end and then they're going to run their pipe and bring it in and do their thing, so.
That's a helpful comment, though, because they've been asking the same questions. They're like, they need to start to understand.
Well, you have, they're going to each house, because everything is different.
Everybody's different.
And that's, and that's part of the concern, so I'm still trying to figure out how that process is going to look, but what's hard is that I don't want to sit here and say, "Chris, we're going to let you know," and then I'm not out in the field, and I don't know if they're, they're digging, and you're like, "What's going on?" Right? Because that would be my luck, that would happen. So, I need somebody, a contractor, and that's what we've done before, to be a liaison, so that we get a report back. And we're going to have an engineer oversee the work that's being done, so the town will have a voice to make sure that, you know, we're being represented and it's being done the way we want it to be done.
I just have one other question.
Sure.
Are we voting on this ordinance as written tonight? Yes. And the only reason I'm asking this question is because we have a, an uncontained well in Mike's Auto Service, and I'm curious as to how the marina was brought in, because if we want to wash cars, why wouldn't you be allowed to keep that well set up? And now, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of it.
But I was curious, like, how, how did they end up?
Um, because they had a concern about.
They brought the concern to the state?
To the meeting of the state, yeah. So, we addressed everything that was brought up, so.
There's, there's a process, which you can get attention. It's, it's worked.
You wouldn't want to refuse, I mean, who would want to refuse the access to public water? I'm just thinking, not being exposed to public water costs coming up, so.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the use, it depends on a lot of things, and we got to get an exception from D P H because.
And so, it may not be worth.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to say yes or I don't want to say no, because I don't know the answer, and, and I'm happy to learn into it, you know, I mean.
It may not be worth the.
And water, it really wasn't bad. In Hartford, we had city for years, it really wasn't bad at all. I mean, you know, I mean, we always washed the cars, washed the boat, and we had stuff going on. We never had a problem with it. It was, it was really.
These are regulated by PIRA, just so you can help.
That's really the only reason I'm asking, is just thinking of extra expenses.
And I appreciate, I can appreciate you asking that question, but that's, that's how the fees are assigned to PIRA, so, yeah.
My concern is generally, because in your situation, you're controlling the water usage, you're washing the cars. In my situation, it's customers, it's me. I've seen them many times, I take the poses, they throw them on the docks, but it's still running, so it's, it's out of my control, so I don't think it needs to be that much.
Liz, is the same contractor, are they running separate contractors to run the laterals into the buildings, or is that, that's not going to be the same guy running the main line, right?
I don't know, Liz. I really don't. Like, honestly, this is just.
No, I just want, that's what we used to do.
Yeah, we're on the engineering piece right now.
Next step is for Connecticut Water to get the engineering plans and specifications drawn up, figure out where those connected waters in the houses, so addressing your question. And then, once that plan is, is completed, it has to be approved by D P, all right? And then, once it's approved, the town can go out and get this, an RFP for a contractor. It'll be a pre-qualified list of contractors that work with Connected Water, because ultimately, Connected Water's going to be the one that supplies the water and maintains the line.
Anybody can bid on the contract, but you need to have the spirits pre-qualified.
That's what I was asking. That was what I was asking.
Yeah. You know, so we want, obviously, we want to have done this type of work before coming with recommendations and everything to be able to do it. But whether that's the same contractor who does that or not, you can totally know. And there, you know, and that's the thing is that I am then helping us and then I got to run it by DPH. We have to make sure everybody's on the same page in order for it to go.
The reason I ask a lot of these questions is that's what I used to do, but that gives everybody else to know what's going on, that's all. I'm, I'm okay, I'm cool.
No, I mean, it's fine. I'm, I'm happy to answer any question and then things that we can't answer, we're happy to find out and find out for sure. So.
Cool.
All right.
Could I ask you to repeat what you said about hiring somebody about well abandonment? I didn't understand.
So the wells have to be of the entity. So I know that's the only way that the person who does that is a licensed well driller. So whoever comes in to do this construction is going to have to have a licensed well driller on their staff.
You have to pay for it?
Nope. No. No. This grant is made for. They're going to pay for that. They're going to pay to abandon your well and they're going to pay to hook up the water. If you decide you don't want to do it, that's fine, but in five years or something goes awry, then the expense to do it is on the property owner, which is fair.
Some of us out there have case wells and others of us have each and a four pipe that go down as a well. The same process for both?
I don't think so.
It would be? Okay.
If you're drawing water out of the ground, whoever that's considered a well. It just makes it easier.
And you have to remember, it's, the reason that they're doing this is that we can't do a community well because the water is moving, right? The water's so, so down with the bedrock, they don't know where it's going to go. So they haven't allowed people to drill new wells to do anything because they don't know what's going to happen. So by running this pipe, it's going to be clean, protected water that isn't going to be contaminated. And that's the whole idea, is to eliminate the contamination. That's how we got the funding and that's how we got what we needed. So.
Were there big fire hydrants?
Yes, 12 of them. Around. Then I don't, I don't have, I don't remember the exact location now, but there will be 12 hydrants that are that approved right now. Yes.
I have Connecticut Water up in Colchester. I have a monthly bill for two people, about 40 bucks a month.
Yeah, that's what they do. That's what they do.
We spend more than that and drinking more and bottled water.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, I mean, my goal is listen, nobody wants another bill, but it's clean and safe. People can't sell their properties right now with contamination. It's just, it's, it's devaluing. And, you know, I used to sell property insurance. If you have a source to be able to bring water in and you're not near necessarily a, we have a great volunteer fire department, you don't pay as much for property casualty insurance. So my goal is that the savings and what people are going to see, the, the, you know, the benefits are going to outweigh the negative. I mean, you know, but at the end of the day, people can't be drinking that stuff. Yeah, so.
Do you have a rough idea when you're going to start?
Probably construction next year. Yeah. We're going to get all the engineering done, get all the easements and everything and like that. And if, if we have to eat something from you, we need an easement, we're going to send you a letter, we're going to let you know, we're going to figure it out. Okay? And it would just be you on the property, do what needs to be done. So.
Liz, do you know if the, the, the side dogs with the water?
The water has to go first. Yes. Yep. And then whatever, like we're at, we're trying to figure that out now. So we're trying to just, if something needs to be dug up, we're trying to figure out like how to fix it and tighten, but the water. You all know how I feel about this water. The water is going first. Anything else has to, yes.
Do you know, is there a restriction on how many meters you can have on a property? You know, because I've got several residents, can I have each resident meter?
I don't know, but we can find that out.
Yeah? Okay, question.
I mean, you can't be unique in that, so we can find, I can find that out.
Do you have a water meter set for three days in a row?
Yeah. I would, I can't imagine in this day and age it wouldn't be a vote. I'm happy to ask the question.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we still have a couple minutes before we have an actual vote.
I have one maybe irrelevant question, but is it possible that at the budget meeting in May or whatever, that people could vote to spend this grant money elsewhere?
No.
Okay. So there's only one purpose for this grant money?
Yes.
And it's either yes to spend.
The only way we got it is by doing.
Okay. I just wanted to understand that clearly.
Absolutely not. But that's why, I just, I don't want people to take it as a done deal, right? And I appreciate everyone who wanted to be here today and ask them the question or whatever, but that's how we approve the funding to be spent. So the state is saying, here you go. We need to put a line item in on the budget. I did not want to confuse the budget process with this because I didn't want people to think it was all tied together. So that's why they're being handled separately. And I figured the residents that are affected by this, you have specific questions to this, so I wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity to address those. But no, it cannot, it cannot be spent anywhere else. It's specifically, the bond issue releases money specifically for this reason. That's a good question.
I have one more.
Yes.
On Little Road Road, is that a done deal if the water's going down the end now?
It's always been here. All these, I have 14 little no's, all the way down.
Seven years ago. He jumped over there.
Would they run into a situation? Would there be a problem later on? We're not, we're two road yet.
Doesn't matter.
That's one of the areas where we need to get easements to get through. We got to talk, we got to talk to all the property owners there and make sure we have the authority to go through there. You're not unique there. There's a couple other streets.
Rich Lane is, is not a town road. There's a few that are down town roads. So that's why we need easements to go down the road. Yep.
And we'll be talking.
We will. Yeah. Yeah, we want to get that done, yes.
If they don't give it, if somebody doesn't want the easements to do that, to stop the line from coming down.
That's a really good question.
So, the legal answer, right? Is yes. Right? The practical answer is the town will take that by having to do anything that they have to force the issue. We're not, we're not going to allow somebody at the front of the line to stop everybody else from getting water. All right? So there's an easy way and there's a hard way.
And there's a hard way. Unless, so, if it goes, I mean, let someone go the easy way. I can't imagine.
Let's just get it done.
Right.
Good question. I said that earlier because electricity can be found a lot of problems.
You told me that.
We've lost a problem with that since electricity was down. All those years, it was four people at the end and no electricity.
We are now.
I'm a little worried that we're going to get somebody on the line as long as we can take it by a minute or whatever.
We can force the issue, yes.
I mean, I don't like, I don't like to do things that way, but if we have to, you know, that's what we will do.
That's great.
Yep.
So do you guys see any opposition at the next meeting when it comes time to vote for the?
I don't know, because everybody who I thought was in opposition has left now, so they.
I didn't realize there, how can we talk to people to try to change their minds?
I, I, I mean, I think it's a pretty, I mean, this is, to me, this is a no brainer. So, I mean, if people came tonight and come to the next meeting, I think we're fine. Just make sure you come.
How much notice will we give? Will we get it? How will they get it?
It will come and have news. It will be printed as a legal notice and have news.
And your neighbors will know, make sure.
Yes. Make sure. All right. Can we go to the town meeting part? All right, so we're going to close the public hearing. Mr. Brooks, how are you?
Very good, thanks.
Guys, I need a motion from the floor for a moderator in front of town meeting.
Nominate Tony Jemai.
I'll have him. Okay. Any other nominations from the floor? All those in favor will allow me to make to be our moderator this evening. I'm the host. Okay, Mr. Jemai.
Okay. Tony.
And I'll count.
Call me.
We do. And I'll start counting.
I'll count it.
I'm just going to do the best.
Good evening. So if the town clerk would read the call.
Legal notice. Notice of public hearing and special town meeting, April 23, 2018. Notice is hereby given, there will be a public hearing on April 23, 2018 at 6:30 PM at the Haddon Volunteer Fire Company Community Hall, 439 Sabre Road, Piggan, for ordinance enacting groundwater management zone in Tylerville section of Haddon. Notice is hereby given to all electors and others entitled to vote at town meetings of the town of Connecticut, the town. The special town meeting of the town will be held on April 23, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Haddon Volunteer Fire Company Community Hall, 439 Sabre Road, Piggan in Connecticut, 06441 for the following purposes. To choose a moderator to preside over such meeting and consider and vote on proposed ordinance. One, an ordinance enacting groundwater management zone in Tylerville section of Haddon, dated this 12th day of April 2018, Liz Malardo, Larry Maggi and Melissa Schla.
Okay, so could we have a motion to accept the call as written?
I need that motion.
Second?
I'll make the motion.
Claire did.
All right.
Okay.
Any discussion about the call itself? Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the call as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Names? Abstentions?
Or you do paper ballot?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The call is accepted. We've heard a pretty detailed discussion about what's going on. Are there any questions about the vote itself? About the pick? Any unanswered questions you want to bring up at this time? Any discussion? Now's the time. Okay, so let's have a motion to accept the new ordinance about the groundwater in Tylerville.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mike?
Oh, Mike did, I'm sorry.
You want to say?
I'm sorry, that was correct.
Okay. So the motion down the floor to accept the ordinance as printed in the paper of record and as available up at the front desk. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, let's vote on it. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance for groundwater relating to Tylerville switching over to clean water, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Don't make the paper ballot.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Chris, motion carries.
Chris, motion carries.
Second?
Alan.
All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.